The. Agenda to set uh. Date time for amended the budget.
You sit the bottom?
Yeah.
Budget amendment.
Budget amendment. Anything else to be? On the agenda?
I'll make the motion approve the agenda with that addition.
Sorry.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approve the minutes, May sixth.
Read through them, if you're correct for the meeting, motion approved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both here, claims.
I looked through the claims, we got three hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight seventy-six on general. And forty, excuse me, four thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents on drainage.
That's what I saw too, so I'll second.
What was that first number?
Three hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight seventy-six.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both here. General public. Todd.
You're up. Alright, um, I asked Trish to put me on today, I guess I just kinda wanted to update you all. With things that have happened since I was here a week ago, um. The Conservation Board met last Tuesday. And talked through River Development's proposal, reason their dam. Uh, they voted to uh pursue selling the reasoner dam to River Development. So. The next step in the process is to approach you as a group and I guess kinda get your. Feedback, get your feelings on that, um. There's a, obviously a process to selling public property, um, you need to publish a resolution. Hold a public hearing and then take action on that resolution, so I guess. Before I jump through all those hoops, I. Just kinda wanna get your feedback, um. And if it's all comes down five zero, then I won't go into the trouble of doing all that, but. I know there. Will be some conditions included um in that transfer of ownership, um. Like granting construction access to. The River Group, which I don't think is an ideal breaker on either side, um, like on the east side, the, the city actually owns the mill race. So they would deal with the city on that east side. On the west side where that Eagle Beach Park is, that is a joint ownership area between city of Humboldt. Humboldt County and uh, it's the Housing Development Corporation. Again, I don't think that would be an issue with any of the parties involved, but that was one of the things that was brought up. Um. The county acting as an applicant or a FEMA grant, um, I know I talked through that with you a little bit last week. I believe that's something they pretty strongly wanna pursue, if I'm gonna speak easy, correct me. Um, and then. Probably the third condition that has been discussed would be. That all future liability would be assumed by the buyer. Um, I've talked to Allers and Cooney. Um, they're working on like the transfer of ownership type thing. And they, they did say that that's something you want to have worded correctly, make sure that that's included in whatever. Transfer agreement you end up uh signing, basically. Um. I guess that's kinda what I have, are there other? I guess maybe let's back up, I'm, I'm getting a car to head up horse, what are your feelings on a transfer of ownership?
One question I have is you're talking about the liability, but. What if for some reason they run out of money in their fund? And then they don't have money for the insurance for the liability?
After ownership is transferred, that liability would fall on the River Development Group.
Okay, so even if they run out of money and don't have money for the. Then they would go after. The people who are on the board then for their River Development?
Sandy, I, I asked that question and the answer I got was. Their River Development's lawyer would have to kinda sort that out.
Cause that's my, my big thing is the, is the liability, you know?
And I guess with that said, in this day and age, anybody can sue over anything, I mean. I thought threatened, you just looked at me, I, I can, I can sue, you know what I mean?
Yes.
But that was a big thing like with Allers, um. Worded in such a way as you protect the county as much as you possibly can.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, yeah, that's, I just wanna make sure that's.
Yep.
You know, cause if this does happen. I, we need, the, the county needs to be completely out of it.
Yeah, that was uh definitely one of the Conservation Board's concerns.
So. Yeah, to speak to Sandy's thought, that's. You, you haven't maybe quite got there, you mentioned, you know, Allers and Cooney, the Galanies. That this would sever. This is like a clean, complete break. The county is rid of it and it's not gonna get it back and it's not gonna have that many liability, there's no absolute chance of that. Period.
Once ownership is transferred to county. Even if something fluky happened and things didn't feel quite like River Development wanted them to. The county would not be on the hook. To own it again, is that?
Yeah, I saw.
Well, then anything, I don't care, own liability, anything.
Yeah.
Well, it's like, it's like private property, if you don't pay your taxes, it ends up in the county's hands.
It's, it's taxable?
No, it's not, but, you know, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I, you know, that's why they don't want it coming back to it.
Can you uh speak to the DNR's uh involvement of? Responsibility, obviously they've always had jurisdiction over dams. That uh, in the community may have uncovered some of that. Where obviously everyone has to abide by the DNR and their rules, regulations and stipulations. So. Can you speak to what you've learned, um, a little bit that you know?
River Development would be subject to the same rules that we have on their transfer. Um, transfer of management as far as the DNR was concerned, um. I suppose at the time they did that, they could tweak that agreement or negotiate, um, some changes in that. Um, considering the agreement we have right now is pretty vague, it's. It's less specific than one we have for Rutland, you know, with the, the gates on Rutland. When the river reaches a certain level, we open the gates and vice versa when it's going down. There really isn't anything like that in the Humboldt. Operational agreement.
Cause there really was no operation.
Um, not really, but with the changes that River would like to see, you know, the operating the gates. They would probably tweak that agreement, Eric, but. Essentially it would be, you would replace Humboldt County with River Development Corporation in that. Existing agreement, just how that would change, as far as rules that they're subject to, that would remain the same. Everything would, nothing would be different. Is that what you're asking me?
Essentially, yes, but it's still, and I mean, it's not all of you, you're not legality of all this, but. I mean, you think you're kinda getting the gist of our biggest concern is it severs this.
And it is not the county's responsibility, liability. Concern. Conservation Board included in that. Uh, can't speak to the Conservation Board because I'm not on that board, but I see what the vote was, I would imagine. Correct me if I'm wrong, that they may have had the same kinda thought process to say, we're done.
I think they viewed it as a, you know, it's been pretty contentious, honestly, that's all space they. Um. Viewed it as a kind of amicable type of a. Obviously River is very passionate about what they wanna see done. Um. This is a plan where, hey, you can take the ball, run with it and do what you want to do. Um, and the county with the FEMA thing will support that as much as they can, you know, acting as a. I guess for lack of a better term, pass through type thing for the money if that is successful, if that FEMA grant is successful.
I still believe that option two is long-term best for Humboldt County, we will bring. Money into Humboldt County, will bring tourism. I would hope if this does go through and if. The River Development Group cannot raise enough money to do what they wanna do with the dam, that they would actually. Have an open dialogue and actually honestly think about possibly doing option two. You know, I know once it goes to them, it's their baby and that's, and I get it, but. To get the money might be another thing, and if they can. If, you know. Whatever, I would just hope that if they don't get the money, they would consider. Being open to option two then. I'm not gonna stand in the way of the Conservation Board, that's why that we appointed them. Um. And. I personally feel we need to support the Conservation Board and their decision. But I still believe that option two is long-term, the best. And that's all I'm gonna say.
I would echo that and then ask you, going back to grants, I know you brought this up last week. In this FEMA pass through, I think that's a fair term. That is. That is only an agreement that because FEMA requires a governmental agency. That's it. That's, that's one grant. Any other grants and, and writing said grant, none of this is a responsibility of the Conservation Board, the county, anything. It's only an agreement that if that was successful. That that money would be allowed to pass through the county because it is required to do so.
Yep, and to my knowledge, Eric, FEMA is unique in that requirement, that it has to be a county-owned facility to be on.
And then that would be that, that's, that's the only thing.
Um, above and beyond that, the other grants that at least I'm aware of. A nonprofit can apply and is eligible to receive funding. So. At the conclusion of the FEMA process. I, I think the county would be, at least to my understanding, would be pretty much out of the damn business. Other than one route upstream, yeah.
Or you can only do one damn thing at a time.
Yeah, yep.
But that, that, I really appreciate Sandy's comments, cause I echo them a hundred percent. And I also respect and appreciate Conservation Boards, I've said many, many times and I'll continue to do so. And you, your board Todd has done a phenomenal amount of work with this, if you, anybody that even has a feeble memory. Can think back over the years how much work you have done to accomplish what you did.
Yeah, and honestly, I'd like to maybe give them a little bit of a shout out.
Would you please?
We don't always agree, everybody has their opinion, but. I put myself in their shoes and man, as a member of a volunteer board. I don't know if I'd still be sitting at that table at the end of all this.
They, they.
Quite a bit. And I applaud them for having the, the fortitude to stick it out, so not jump ship and. Uh, very strong group and, and I'm fortunate to work with them.
Yeah.
Very knowledgeable and very, very different areas, all of them.
Terrific amount of work on this, um. And it's just, um. I don't know.
For applauding people, I think you should applaud the, the same to the group that's trying to take it over. Yep, taking something off our hands that we've neglected.
They kinda did.
I know, I'm just saying, everybody's, everybody's passing out kudos, but this thing is being passed off to somebody. And. We're the one that's looking good.
Gets it out of the.
Off our hands and give them a chance to do it.
And honestly, that was the end goal of option two, it turned it back into a river, which. Got rid of the liability and the future expenses, which this option also grants. And it gives the River Development Group what they wanted to give it a shot. And so to me, it's a win-win for both.
I think so too.
Yep, I would agree.
And to be fair Bruce, just to be clear, I'm not throwing shade on the River Development.
No, I'm not saying the honor, I'm just saying, if we're, but we, we keep going over the same thing and, and. It's like, let's just move forward, they've asked to buy it. You granted to sell it, so what do we gotta do? Set some legislation?
I think, we gotta make a motion first to do it.
And I think that was our goal of pausing our time to give them the time to. Work through their issues, what, what they wanted to do and this is uh turns into a. Great solution for the community and I'm all for it.
Yep.
So.
Okay, well, that being said, then I'll make the motion for the sale of the reasoner dam to the River Development Group.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Wait a minute.
But we have to have a public hearing.
Just. Bruce can't vote.
Why?
Because you're on the River Development, but we can have a second, anybody else, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure it's labeled.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay, good.
Okay. We can't sell it until we have a public hearing. So next thing we need to do is set a date and time for a public hearing.
For the sale.
And.
For the sale of it.
Okay.
So what do we? Voting on right now?
To set a time and date for the sale of the dam to the River Group. Just to ba- basically.
It may, okay, the way this was written, yep, I'll re. Re- reach.
Well, let's.
These are my.
I've got a motion on the floor to sell Reasoner Dam. Pending. Possible. Public hearing. Out come.
Yes.
Yes, there we go.
Okay.
I'll reword my motion for that wording.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion?
Uh, the discussion would be what we already had.
Now we have set a date and time for a public hearing for the sale of the dam.
How much time do we have to give that? Um, I talked to John a little bit on Friday. I guess it just depends, I think both. It's both sides, for lack of a better term, would like to kinda keep things moving along as quickly as we can. Um, John did say we could. Publish things. Hold a public hearing, vote on the resolution. Without having all the stipulations hammered out, if you wanted to go that route and then vote on the stipulations. Later. Or if you want to. Just do everything at once.
I think it'd be a lot clearer if it was done properly, that's my opinion.
I would like to see this declaration before anything voted on.
Yeah.
I was just claiming it out there, something John said, but I agree, like. Have everything out on the table.
Yeah, we, I think we need to have everything hammered out and everything. So the public knows, we know, I mean, everybody. There's no hidden.
So I'm thi- honestly thinking it's probably gonna be a couple of weeks, um. As much as I would like to tell you.
Well, as long as you didn't say a couple of months, I think that's totally expedient.
No, Allers is working on that. Purchase agreement.
Almost, almost getting into June.
I was gonna say, you think in June third, is that what you're thinking?
I think that's achievable.
Yes.
Does that basically give you almost three weeks and almost that quite?
Right.
What time? Time?
Yeah.
Are you talking June third? June third?
Yeah, June third.
Dude, I will tell you then, cause June third. Nine AM. And what do we call this, public hearing for sale of said dam?
Res-.
Resolution, resolution.
Go due at eight thirty in case.
Eight thirty-five?
All right, yeah, I mean, we don't, or eight forty-five or whatever, I mean, I think nine, I think.
Eight forty-five?
The sooner the better.
Eight forty-five, eight forty-five. June third. And are we talking resolution slash sale of?
Yes, resolution.
Public hearing.
Yep.
Public hearing. Resolution, sale.
Yep.
June third, eight forty-five. There's my motion.
I'll second Eric's motion.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, June third, we have the public hearing on the dam at eight forty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Okay, Jenna.
Um, I put into your box about the Hmoga. Maybe group, so they were to be, they applied for exemption on their taxes and somehow it's. This either wasn't put in the system, the system didn't read it, so basically. They are approved for exemption status. I just have to go back and refund their last fall's payment to them. And then going forward, they'll be exempt from property taxes.
Okay.
Because. Um, they're nonprofits in that, so. Yeah, it just, the paperwork, I didn't print it out, but the paperwork from the attorney was all turned in. To the assessor's office and it was marked as exempt, so if you see the one sheet, um. Linda went back and put her notes on it, their certificate of adjustment. Maybe the second page.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so. So I just, if it's okay with you guys, I will just return their September payment. And I'll go and adjust their taxes for this year to zero going forward. They should not receive a tax statement.
Need an action on that, I would.
Just wanted to make sure it was okay and you guys knew what was going on.
Well, we appreciate that, so last, it was just, it should have been actually last year, but it got missed.
Yeah, cause they applied in twenty-one, so it should have not even been on this year's taxes.
Right.
So they paid what they had to pay up to last year.
So everything is correct.
Everything is corrected now.
First one. I make a motion that uh. We do move the Humboldt movie group to the exempt status from here forward.
I'll second. Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
They are five oh one C three, Eric. There are five oh one C threes.
Um, I'd have to print out the, the attorney's, yeah, it, Linda looked over everything and it was approved. I just didn't print out the attorney's paperwork, so, yeah. So everything was good.
All right.
Very.
Thank you for that. Code AO two, whatever that is.
Huh.
It says on the back of the back page, exempt code AO two or AD two.
Oh, under the.
Under, oh, yeah, whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever that means.
Yeah.
Yeah, I. I mean, if you want, I can print out the. Yeah, they're non, so, they're non-profit.
They just missed.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Jenna. Moving on, Ben.
Morning.
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 Got a couple items for the agenda for today, um. The first is to approve a minor change to the Humboldt County Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five. Uh, second, Iowa DOT Secondary Road Construction Program. Uh, the page that I sent you shows the project that we had to get added back on. Um, this is the Culver Project that we're doing in the town of Thor. We pulled it forward. In the budget or the five-year program amendment that we did. Uh, in December, I believe. And for whatever reason, it didn't carry over into this new budget.
Hmm.
Uh, and I missed it, but as we were progressing with development, uh. The DOT flagged it that it wasn't in next year's. And the chance of me getting it through a DOT letting next month. When I'm still waiting on an Army Corps permit is slim, so. Uh. Because the DOT hadn't approved it yet, they said that I could bring it back to the board and. Re-sign it by adding in the project that was previously.
Does this? Still, you. Uh, keep this on track where you originally thought it would be, Ben?
Uh, it's close, um. Ideally, I was shooting for a March letting date. And we submitted for Army Corps permits back in. The end of October, beginning of November, and I'm still waiting for that permit to clear.
Hmm.
So. Because of the. Ornamental concrete rails that sit about eighteen inches higher than the road on either side of it. They wanted us to do a historic bridge study.
Hmm.
Um, even though it's only ten feet wide. Um. Got a price on that, it was close to five grand.
Oh.
Where do they want it moved if it is?
Right, right.
Exactly.
Um, because this is a project that. We're funding upfront. Through our front-to-market account and then being reimbursed by the state. Because of uh, uh STBG. Swap grant that we applied for through Midas. Um. Just five grand would be ineligible for reimbursement, so it's either coming out of our pocket or the towns. So.
This was the help, the helping the city.
Yes, 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 so. Uh. We're in a holding pattern with them right now, they thought that because it's not technically a bridge that the DOT would. Would waive the requirement for inspection and. I'm told it's sitting on an administrator's desk right now for review.
And.
Well, there's not much we can do about that, but this was just a. Fell off the, the plan that you had it on type situation here, Chris, and it needed to get back on there to move this along. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
And you're asking to get it back on there? Do we need to make a motion on that? I would make the motion to. Change, what do we, what would you say?
To add that program or add that project back on to the construction program.
So, the. Doesn't have, it doesn't have a number, you want a number?
It's a long one.
Let's, let's go with the, uh, let's go with the four box, let's go with the four box project.
Sounds great.
Added back to. The Fiscal Year, uh, twenty-five Iowa DOT Secondary Road Construction Program.
So optimistically, right now, I'm, I'm shooting for an October letting date.
Well, might be didn't yet this year.
We've got check plans and everything done, they've been reviewed. I'm making the small corrections that they had to that, basically we're waiting for the permit.
It'd be nice to get it done this year, all prices are down.
Absolutely, yep.
Yep.
Oh, that's my volunteer.
Oh, that, wait.
Awesome.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both here.
Thanks, Ben. So we have to go through the DOT's very well.
Yeah, this is like, this isn't bad with the DOT, it's the Army Corps is, is really, um. Uh, dragging their feet on their permitting, um. Because the last historic bridge study that was completed was done in the mid nineties. They're now declaring it invalid and they're in the process of. Doing another historic bridge study and I think their plan is to be done by the end of twenty twenty-five.
Hmm.
But in the meantime, any of the replacements that we do is supposed to have a study done out of pocket.
Hmm, did you have any luck working with the city?
Uh, yes, I have talked to the city and their new, uh. One of the new board members that's on the Historic Preservation. And we are going to. Attempt to write one for the bridge replacement up on Texas Avenue by party, so. Uh, I'm waiting on. I don't remember what I'm waiting on for that one right now, uh, it might be the Army Corps evaluation on that one as well. Um, but as soon as I've got their opinion on that, we can go back and. No, I'm sorry, I'm waiting on uh, University of Iowa's. Response for that one.
Oh.
So.
Uh, okay.
So anything that has age on it, we have to have it checked up, see if it's historically?
It's not even really age, I mean, they're wanting any bridge that was constructed prior to like. Nineteen seventy-six. You know, so I mean, you start like.
Tier jerks to seem, you know, I mean, no, worthy to.
Seventy-six, you're, you're talking bridges that are less than fifty years old.
Yeah.
That's not that old for.
And honestly, okay, it's a historical bridge. What you do.
You can still tear, you can still tear it down.
You can still, you just gotta.
Move it, you, you have to put a placard or something up that says, here's the former.
Gotta pay somebody a bunch of money just to do it, you know?
Yep. The next item that I have on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the county's right away for Corey Benz. Uh, for Tyrell Tile Repair in Section sixteen and twenty one of Weaver Township. He is in the process of uh, doing some tile work right now. And. He's having trouble finding an intake that we show that we have on our uh, grading plans. So he wants permission to do some exploration to find it.
So you said you show ones, you can't find one.
He's gonna do it out on private property, but if.
You might get into.
Needs be, he might get into the right.
Kudos for getting that, working the right away permit prior to.
And I told him that we could put it on a list for us to do, it's just. It's not something that we're gonna drop what we're doing and this is something that you'd like done. Sooner.
So I, he talked to me about this, he talked to you about this and. Yeah, so I would say that's a good deal and like I said, kudos for getting a permit before you do the work. And Ben appreciates that, we all do. And I will make a motion that we approve this application to Corey Benz for working the right away.
All the paperwork's in order, right?
Yes.
Hold second.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Beyond that, the you guys saw in claims, we paid for some construct, temporary construction easements. Uh, for the box culvert that we let two weeks ago. So those will go through claims this week. Uh, starting surveying on our paving project. Is set commence tomorrow. The contractor and his sub. Made an error last week. Uh, they were supposed to come out and just set barricades out. In the road ditch along the project and the sub went out and put up all the barricades. On the roads and they didn't have any sandbags, so they just set them up without sandbags. Well, then the windstorm came through on Wednesday. The contractor that's doing the surveying will be doing it under open. Traffic, he'll throw off a couple of barricades at either end, just to notify traffic that. There's work being done, um. Working day started getting charged on a week ago today. So they're getting. Getting charged for it. We got one of our two new maintainers delivered on Friday. The walk around is after lunch today. On that machine, uh, this one is going to bode to replace number sixty two.
Well, what are you gonna do with old number sixty two?
Leaving. It's leaving. Trade it off. Uh, we got pretty good trade prices. So.
Caterpillar.
Yes.
Do you hear anything on our dump truck?
Uh, we have delivery of the dump truck. Wow, uh, we picked up Dean Mack. About a week and a half ago.
With all the snow equipment came?
Yep.
Wow.
All the snow equipment is on it. Uh, well, it was, we've taken it off now. But yeah, we've been, we've been running that. Uh, the guys compared it to a smooth ride like a Cadillac. Uh, they're very impressed. Next one is scheduled to be built. We got bumped from the July build. It is now scheduled for October. For bill.
So same type of truck?
Yep. South of Thor, that first mile, we did quite a bit of work last week, uh. Exploration for uh, underground tile that went underneath the highway. We found ten locations in that mile. Uh, we dug up the west side of the road, uh, cleaned the tile out. Got a size for it. We're working with subsurface as a company. They do a. Uh, reinforced UV liner. That uh, we're getting a price. To have them line the inside of them, uh. I've talked to a couple of counties that have done this product from what they say is basically. Assuming you've got a tin whistle all the way around it, tin whistle completely rust away, this thing's got enough strength. To it that it will, it, it's got more strength than what the tin whistle had.
How deep would them be? That's why, that's a deep ditch on the other side.
Yeah, on the west side, most of them are anywhere from three to five feet deep.
From the bottom of the ditch.
Yeah, from the bottom of the ditch and then outlet closer to the bottom of the dredge ditch. We've evaluated nine, the very far south one is underwater. We're waiting for water to go down to get that one evaluated. Uh, but as of right now, we've found three that we can eliminate to try and save money. Most of them are ten inch. Uh, tiles. Clay or unreinforced concrete.
Dave's kind of skinny and he could snorkel in there, couldn't he?
There's a twenty four inch I can crawl through, but that's the only one I do.
Call through anything. Are they structurally good enough that you found to put this UV liner in and. It'll, it'll go in and it'll, I mean, they're, they're not falling apart at this moment then.
Wait, no, no.
That's what you're trying to.
What we're trying to prevent and I've been told that these have a eighty to hundred year lifespan.
The liner.
Right. But in case anybody's wondering about what we've been doing for work down south of Thor, I'm sure they've seen the, the back goes out there or the excavators out there. We've been digging up tile and some of them, I'm sure the farmer didn't even know that we had.
There's a lot of tile coming out of Westfield.
Completely blocked, yeah. I, I never dreamt that they'd had.
Shocking. And what's, what's the length? And how many? And how long?
One mile.
One mile. That is a lot. It is. I think some of them are draining the city of Thor possibly.
That could be.
You know, on that north end, there's that twenty four, right?
So what's the average length of these things?
For us, that we're gonna reinforce fifty feet, that'll get us from the bottom of the ditch on the west side. To beyond the shoulder on the east side.
Then we'll put new tin whistles in.
And then we'll, we'll stick a tin whistle on the outlet end, new one. Uh, more than likely put an intake in the road ditch on the west side.
And we're doing that? Liner?
Yeah.
Tin whistle work and.
That's our plan, so uh, talking to them, they're still working on a quote for us. Uh, but they were thinking later this summer coming in, same time that they're here doing work for Webster and Hamilton County.
Same, hopefully in time, it'll be drier.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
Hopefully.
Yeah, beyond that, we've got a couple of trainings this week. Motorator Operator Training Claire Ian on Wednesday. Uh, Kim and I are sitting in on a digital time sheet training. And uh, we're in the process of prepping for dust controls.
We do our ten hour days.
We'll switch to our ten hour days on, um. So I got a request from our, uh. New office personnel to switch to four nines and a half day on Friday. Beyond that, yeah, everything's going well.
I want to mention something positive cuz we don't always hear that. And people do apparently read the tidbits of information that Ben provides and a while back. He told us that. This came through the. DOT grant for safety flashing beacons on some stop sign, on some intersections that you mentioned. And several people mentioned that they were very appreciative of that, that safety place.
Yep.
Safety factor.
We've got eight of them uh, on order. They're supposed to be here sometime next month.
Yep, so they, they did, so they did see that, you know, you. Mentioned that and the work to get the grant and the additional safety feature on some of those intersections and they were very appreciative.
And you'll probably see me coming in here and in the next month or two applying for. That same grant again for the remainder of those beacons that we didn't get the first time.
Farm driving, looks like way he tops there. I haven't been out there outside enough today and take a look.
Your house turned.
On a road closes that you've had last week, are we, is it dropping down anywhere? See that we got damaged along the shoulder or. Withstand damage or you haven't seen enough?
Most of the damage that I've seen is on the east side of Murray Bridge. Cut and scoured, couple, two, three feet deep, um. Various depths for two hundred feet on the east side. Anything else that's come up like south of Bradgate, usually it comes up slow and it goes down slow, so we don't get much for washing. Yeah, and I haven't looked at Bormans yet. I was up in the area, but.
I drove by it the other day and it was, so I was washing that, it was pretty good again.
It's been a few years since we've had the kind of rains that we've had here.
That's one bridge, it could be removed.
Yeah. Put it for sale, sign on that too.
I'm kidding, man.
I didn't hear that, or did you mention that trails quite often, trying to buy those historical vision?
Usually, uh, I mean, there's not much. Buy them for a dollar. But talking to the core as far as like historic preservation, they're highly in favor of. Reallocating these old structures to parks, uh, trails. I think DOT has four of them sitting in a yard somewhere, just waiting for somebody to kind of buy them. The problem is the DOT. Thinks that they're worth money, yeah. Yeah, so. Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to move one or two uh, to a park or a trail if somebody's interested.
Suzie, that looked nice against your new.
Thank you, Ben.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, set date for the budget management, Ben, amendment.
May twenty eighth, it's twenty seventh.
My grandkids counting eight, gotta stand.
I don't care what time you want, nine, eight forty five or whatever.
What day was that again, Trish?
The twenty eighth of May.
We just.
It's a Tuesday. Tuesday cuz yeah, we have, we have but, or claims that week two.
Budget that if I need to.
Yeah, you may.
So you're looking at May twenty for eight forty five? I'll make the motion to second budget and then eight forty five on the twenty eighth.
For a second.
All second.
Any discussion? All favor? Both, Jerry. Okay. Discuss possible action on sanitation department position. I talked with the gal over in Pocahontas, uh, she is having no luck finding anybody. And I told her that we would maybe hire our own or talk with Wright County. And she says if you do, let us know right away because of what your thoughts are because they would, uh. Join with Calhoun County. Share with them.
Yeah, and that'd be closer for them.
Yeah. Do we have any information from Wright County? I talked to Rick, he was gonna talk to the board and to Sandy, his sanitarian over there. But I haven't heard back from him, okay? He said he'd let me know, talk with her and see if she thought you can handle both counties or. What's going on, so.
Well, before we jump ship, we gotta know. What their decision is and if we're able to join. It's more natural for us and them and them and them to go together, I would think. So. Not putting any pressure on that name you mentioned, but.
But she, uh, she said she'd like to know if so it's possible.
Right.
Their meeting, I think, is tomorrow, but. I didn't know whether we could handle that that quick or not, but. That's what's that.
So you said theirs or?
Theirs.
Okay.
Yeah, Pocahontas Tuesday.
What day? Consider letting us out of our two months.
We'll be out of it anyway.
I know we're gonna be out of it, but I'm just saying if we're gonna, if they're jumping ship on us and we're doing the same thing.
Yeah.
But they just break the agreement, we could join with.
We'd be out of it. She said it's gonna take a couple months for transition to get back and forth, so.
I'm all for that. Uh, if, if they're willing to. Let us use her name, Sandy. Then I guess.
Sandy McGrath.
McGrath, I think is her last name.
Then we're gonna be having a. And talk about possibly maybe in the future.
I, I think we need to. Constant battle, keeping sanitarians.
You know.
Yep, we just, we just spin our wheels.
E- exactly, and if we can do something with. What, what are your thoughts, Ben, on, you know, do? I know I'm throwing in real quick. I know I mentioned it once last week. I didn't thought more on it or anything where. You know, when Randy does decide to retire, we do like maybe a joint thing of zoning and. Sanitarian and, and they be placed in, in your office.
Uh, so you're looking at somebody that's joint zoning, joint sanitarian and joint secondary roads.
Yeah, we gotta have something to keep them busy.
Just so they can be in your office.
Right.
I'm not opposed to, we've got an opening in the office and I could definitely use. Uh, an additional staff member on the engineering side of things, um. And you're talking about a very major position.
Yes.
To have somebody get certified and qualified in all three of those things. I mean, every one of them's gonna have. Separate additional training.
But just in our brief time that we've been with Pocahontas, well, we had three people.
Three.
Well, since I think I've been a supervisor, we've been probably seven. Yeah. Yeah, he was.
It's hard with Pocahontas because the location.
Yeah.
Right.
The distance. Well. Think Wright County's is a newer buyer.
It's been a couple of years now.
And she's there, if they have a good feeling and is doing, doing a good job and is planning on being there, this, that would alleviate some issues. But I think, yeah, we'd like, hopefully Rick will get back to you.
Well, she's halfway covering for us now. It's Pocahontas that's contacted her. Got to, Dave would cover us.
Really, so, okay, well, hopefully we can find out and then think of other possibility down the road. Knowing about it.
How soon are you guys thinking?
Oh, it'll be at least a year.
I would think so.
Because ideally I'm hiring somebody at the. And in the engineer's office and getting trained on that and then. The hiring is with the understanding that they'll also get certified as sanitary and, and get training. Planning and something. From Randy before.
Right.
He retires.
Yep.
Yeah, prob- probably nothing immediate, obviously. I don't think so.
No, not yet.
Did her, uh, temp come back?
She did not.
Would we need to call her?
I. Now for her to come back and she got an offer at, uh, Nelson Associates. In Anthony, so she's been staying with her dad, uh, this summer and work there. Yeah, good kids.
Yeah, she did a good job.
So you good with that, Dave? With that discussion, are you?
Yep, not good with it.
I'll check with Rick a little more and see if we can't work something out for next year anyway.
Well, I know he's alive, because I talked to him on the way up here about the Edmo meeting and they insulted me, so just so you know, he's a little touchy this morning.
Some mornings are like.
Oh, he is.
Okay, that's all that one. We didn't get it on the agenda, but I got a message from. Randy Walgo. He's not gonna be able to make the meeting, but, uh. Official vote needed to be taken on the variance at thirty day waiver request. I don't think so, I think we can just.
Right.
Yeah, thirty days.
It automatically goes by the board, so. It should be done with it.
This should be longer, shouldn't it, thirty days?
Yeah, it should be close. Okay, committee report, Eric.
Alright, this past Tuesday, the seventh, we had a, uh, safety meeting. Been back down at the courtroom in the basement. Really wasn't a whole lot going on, other than Ben was in the water that day. But the safety meeting went well, we did have it, so who knows to Ben getting there and having it. We went through that, that was my only really official, extra particular thing last week.
I think it was Tuesday, I went and looked at the project south of Thor. Like I said, completely, there's that many pipes coming out of that field, but. There's a ton of them. Uh, Wednesday, a dog shelter. That place down there just keeps chugging along. Dogs in, dogs out, cats in, cats out.
Holding its own, it stays full.
Yeah, it's holding its own, their, their finances are good. Uh, really impressed with the operation.
They must have had the track girls the other day, because there's a bunch of earth track kids. Running dogs up and down the road.
The dogs, a lot of high school kids volunteer up there, a lot of seniors volunteer, just a lot of people volunteer, it's makes.
Well, there's lots of dogs that look like they, if they were smiling, they were having a good time, because those kids were enjoying their. And it was a decent day, so.
Yeah, you know, a lot of cats, if they have spayed and neutered, I can't believe there's any kittens in the county.
That bill's getting higher and higher and higher.
It does, it's shocking how much money is spent on spitting and neutering in cats. But the money keeps coming in to do it, you know, so. I mean, big thanks to communities for supporting them.
Yep.
That's all I had.
Alright, Wednesday on the eighth, I went up to Gretchen's for that meeting for Edmo, um. Really nothing, uh, we talked a lot about. Options that, uh, Edmo's in a. Has some financial issues with some of the. Parts of their operation and they haven't made any decisions. I guess the one decision that probably kept coming up was we may end up having to cut some hours. For the food. Distribution places and ours, Edmo is in our, uh, food pantry down here. But they, they still have to have their people that work for them, uh, get. So many hours so that they got the lie heap and the lie wap water, um. So. I, I think it's two and a half or three days time that they have to be, uh, at least in the office. So that people that need to sign up for that at government assistance, um, can do that. So, um, they're. Scheduling a, another meeting, whether it's this week or next week, I haven't. I looked this morning before I left and then hadn't got our emails, um, yet. I didn't get back in time for the mobile food pantry, but I see, did you go, Dave? I see the numbers, uh, that I sent me, uh, looked like they, she said the. Report was. Pretty good day, had a, a bit leftover that was taken down to the food pantry, so everything worked out, next mobile food pantry. Uh, it's July tenth, um, but her numbers were. She had thirty-six volunteers, so you must have plenty of help.
Yep.
Humboldt had, uh, hundred and thirty-two families, hundred or three hundred and forty-two. Family members, Humboldt Homes had forty-four. And four, or fifty-two family members, Livermore had twenty-seven families and fifty-six members. And, uh, total family served was two hundred and three. And four hundred and sixty, so kudos to the fifty-six people. They did, uh, seventy-three hundred and sixty pounds, sixty-three pounds of food, so. Sounds like they had a lot of help and moved pretty quick. That's all I had for the week.
Okay, on Tuesday in the morning, Bruce and I.
I forgot about that, yeah.
Met with, um, Jim Murray, the superintendent and, um, Dean Hoover, the sheriff. And of course, our, um, deputy, um, Landry. Corey Landry, and talking about the school resource officer, there is a huge need. For that over, um, within our schools in our county and, um. We need to probably have a workshop meeting on that and try to see what the schools willing to put in. Um, fifty-five to sixty thousand, and then we would need to come up with the other, the other half of that, um. So.
Probably a little more than half.
Yeah, but, well, there, the other thing we gotta think about, it's a, it's a huge benefit, not only to, for the school. And for the safety of our children, but also for the county too, because in the summertime, they would revert back, um. To a deputy and they'd be able to help pick up the vacation times and. And things like that, because a lot of our deputies are long-term and they're, they have vacations, so we won't be shorthanded. So there's a lot of positives to it, and I know there's a lot of parents that would like to see somebody in the schools. So, I think it's a very valuable. Um, program, and it's something that I think we need to really seriously consider and look into. That's one thing that I had.
The other thing was, uh, when we talked up there, um. Money-wise, as far as a vehicle, um, talked to Dean. We sell, usually trade something or get rid of something almost yearly. So we'd be able to pull back something, uh, an older vehicle, it isn't like we're going to use a brand new.
Yeah.
Vehicle to set up there at the schools, so. We just pull it back and use it for an extra year to, for that person to have transportation. I guess I, I know that it, we're all in a budget crunch, uh, but I guess. Safety wise is also, we have a lot of stupidity that, um. When we have teachers that are nervous about, uh, being in the school. We, we have to look at it, not saying we're gonna get it done, but by God, we gotta at least look at the numbers and say. How can we make an effort, so?
Cause he did mention that there are some teachers that. Are very fearful in their rooms, and that's, that's scary. And then the other thing, and I didn't even think about this, Dean brought it up, you know, we're high school and the middle school's right on one sixty-nine. And there might not be some crazy in our community, but there might be some crazy coming, driving by. Say, oh, that's a, that's a school. And who knows what they, you know, I mean, so you gotta think of all the, the different possibility, and I didn't even think about that, that does make sense. I mean, you get a lot of traffic there on one sixty-nine, you don't know who's going on that road.
Right.
And what could happen.
Is this a, a new state funded thing for the schools or?
They have money available that they can draw from, right?
Well.
They're hoping.
They're hoping for that, yes, um, uh. I do have a question out on whether we can use some of our opioid money, maybe pass, I don't know, I've gotta find that out. Because vaping is a thing for the old, that you can use, and they have a huge problem with vaping up at the, the school. So that's, I mean, there's, it's vaping and, um, truancy, I did not realize. What a huge problem truancy has turned into. And, um, would they say that John, it was like twenty that he put out. Um, charges for.
Crazy numbers, but.
I, I just never would have guessed that. But anyway, so there, I don't know if that's even a possibility, but I, I've got a, a call out and to look into that, if we could use some of that money. Um, for that, but, um, yeah.
Well, most of us had the fear. The old man, you don't go to work or you didn't go to school?
Yeah.
You know, when the old man got home, that there was probably gonna be a little bit more than just, we're gonna sit in the corner and talk here.
I got caught skipping once, I never did again.
That was, it's not good, and it's sad that, you know. Dean told us that there's been several that, it's like, he's on a personal relationship, so and so's not at school. Well, I gotta go back over and get him.
Yeah.
And it's.
And they go and get.
How do you do that? I mean, how do, how do we spend our, send our sheriff or one of these deputies to go pick up Billy? Because Billy isn't at school. Sooner or later, somebody's gotta make the commitment that Billy's gotta get his butt out of bed and go to school.
I mean, they, and this person would be up at Bo, they'd be over at Gilmore City, you know, it'd be a, a, a totally shared. Community. Within the schools, all the different schools, so.
It's a problem.
It is. Alright, that's all I got.
Uh, Tuesday, we was at the safety meeting, Ben showed up a little late, he was in, in water, I guess. Uh, I left early, went to Algonah to the state. Put on a seminar or program up there for the food pantry. So I went up and got some interesting facts. Last month, they went through two point three million pounds of food.
Wow.
Humboldt ordered for two hundred and twenty families. And I think we was down to six or seven orders left when I left. The money and the food comes, thirty percent of the comes from the USDA. Thirty-five percent comes from donations. And thirty-five percent is purchased.
Too much, basically a third, a third, a third.
Yep.
Purchased from what fund?
Donations they get in money that they get in.
Give them, that's why they.
Yeah, they donate money to the food bank and. They're putting out now three times more than they did in twenty twenty. So in four years, it's grown three times over. They get grants and donations, and that's where your money comes from. One in ten in Humboldt County need assistance, one in ten families need assistance. They don't make enough money to, uh. Feed the kids right, buy enough groceries. Uh, twenty-two percent of the kids are eligible for food grants, they have a food pantry up at the high school, trying to get it going. Uh, they can't charge for food or donations for anybody. Uh, from the clients and stuff, it's on a whoever wants to donate. But I thought it was across the state, it's one in six, six not making enough money. Needing assistance for food and in Humboldt County, it's one in ten. So.
That was the other thing Jim had made a comment that, you know, um. We have free breakfasts and reduced lunches or free lunches. So you would think that some of the kids that are maybe in that criteria would. You know, I'm going to school so that I can at least get a couple of meals.
Yep.
And it's still not.
It's not being utilized.
Priority, so.
But that fuel program up at the school is a really good.
They are doing good.
They really are, I mean, there's a lot, and they do more than just food, I mean, it's hygiene, it's clothing, it's some great.
And the churches have done a huge job getting stuff put together to donate to, so.
I thought that was some interesting facts, that's just some of them that I jotted down. Then on Wednesday, I was at the mobile food pantry. Like I said, we donated food pretty quick there. Then Wednesday night, I had the animal shelter. And like Rick said, there's dogs in, dogs out, cats in, cats out, and they're full. And I think. By word that, uh, they've got another cat house in Humboldt.
Oh, geez.
Would that be a four-legged freak?
Yeah, when he says cat.
Just to clarify for the press that any innocent people.
Oh, keep it clean.
Yep.
The animals. But, uh, the last one, what'd they take out, forty-some cats?
Oh my God.
It's, it gets very nasty.
The house is gutted, they can't do nothing with it, the smell. What I hear, there's another one in town.
But do they still trade dogs, like if they?
Yeah, they do.
Here, they still, okay.
They get, yeah, I mean. It's kinda insane, some dogs come from a long ways, so, you know, they have. If you follow the Facebook page, you'll see that they'll swap a dog from Kansas or Texas.
Really, okay.
You know, people drive to get it. I don't follow great volunteers.
That's, hey, yeah.
That's all I have.
Yeah, one question on this truancy thing. What is the punishment been from John's office? I mean, what are, what are they getting for punishment? They getting their hand slapped or?
I think recently they said they had twenty that were charged, and you've kinda gotta go through the. From what I understand, the process, you gotta start with getting them charged and then.
Well, the neighbor, one of our neighboring counties, one of the parents. So there's, it's like a, I'm assuming you add up.
You do.
You will have to go through the steps in order, and I don't want John down here thinking that I'm.
There's no punishment, they'll just keep doing it.
Right, well, then there's eventually the fine, and this person did not pay the fine or would not pay the fine and would not send the child, so they.
They doing some time.
They're doing time. Yes.
Well, you request.
And it's the same thing with the vaping. What they've done over there is they fine, but the parents, you know, yeah. And, you know, they might pay the first one, but then there've been a few that have paid, you know, two, and they cut. But I think from what I remember, Pocahontas has like confiscated a hundred and seventy-six vapes. And then I think those parents are fined. I'm not for sure exactly what the fine is, but it's, I think. It's a. It's not a slap in the hand fine, I know that, but I, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the parents end up paying it, I mean, you see, I mean, the kids ain't got the money, so they're paying, I. Yeah, I mean, the parents end up paying it, I mean, you see, I mean, the kids ain't got the money, so they're paying, I guess I should rebase that, the kids are. Right.
Sadly enough, they make that stuff look very normal, like.
Oh.
Highlighters look.
They, they conceal it so well.
Yeah, but there's, um. Vape monitors, I guess, and they're very touchy and very sensitive. Yeah, and I think they can, yeah, so, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, so they know they can, you kind of do it in a way to. Yeah, cause they're very touchy these vape monitors, they've had to outswan the. Just like we've, what's that song, smoking in the bathroom, you know?
Smoke in the boys' room, that was, yeah, smoke in the boys' room, that was.
Yeah, it's a girl, it's always smoking. Anything else, is there anything else, or?
I have a, we don't have to go into drainage for this, this is a drainage update. You can all didn't forget about D D eleven lateral A open ditch. Uh, Mark and Travis Peterson were hired to clean that out, it's been cleaned out since last year and all. Spiffed up along the, uh, the spoils piles and everything, but there was one thing, and that was a bunch of trees along there.
I already recall that, yeah.
Yes, and so I just an update, they called me over there the other day and to look at that, they're probably. Yes, three quarters done with the tree removal, they removed it. You know, past thirty to forty foot, so they're out of the easement area away from the ditch, uh, but they both said. And we looked at those trees, no one really quite knows how that, it's a, it's more than, it's an acre or two of trees.
Wow.
And no one quite, quite knows why all those trees grew up, but they did.
That's what they do.
And anyway, so they, it's been quite a project for them, but that was part of the project, and they are. Uh, getting to the end of that, and then, uh, I also contacted our brush and weed control. Uh, and that is brush and weed control, a group from Algonah. To make sure that that area is on next year's brush control for ditches. Because that was obviously everyone's concerned that these things will start going right back, so. And actually, as luck would have it, we need to do a third of the colony each year for brush control and ditches. I believe that's the slated third for next year, and made refer, make sure that they have a note, and he will treat that. So, that, uh, project's about done, as soon as they get the rest of these trees out of there, and it looks really nice, so.
Good.
Well, speaking of them, them, uh. Trees, if you drive past Fairway, the ditch that comes down from the. Forey up there, Union Cemetery, those things, them willows are getting big again. And I know we've requested, and that's in the city's area. But one of these days, we aren't gonna be able to just hook them and yank them out, get rid of them, uh, they're gonna be deep enough in there and big enough to. They're gonna start holding back, um, stuff, and then we're gonna have issues on Highway three.
I'll, I'll call, call, talk to him.
I know they got a lot of things going on, is.
We'll talk to him about the intersection down on Third Avenue, uh, one sixty nine, so. I'll mention the trees also.
I'd just like to see if we could pull them while they're still, some of them are smaller, but some of them are getting to be pretty good size, so.
Can you tore down those, under that size?
Well, depends on the machine.
And we tore, tore down.
Isn't that just that you painted on there and it kills down to the.
Yeah.
Isn't it?
Water.
That ripper up, if the, if we can pull them things out of there, most of the root and stuff will come out, I think.
Oh, okay, is that between Highway three south then?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a block in there and it's just.
Because the north we can do, or.
Yeah.
The drainage, but.
Okay, south and city.
Well, I walked up through that a couple of years ago, and that's, there's some spots in there, but. People say that the fall from, coming down from the cemetery down to the highway, you'll.